Again, for the pavilion, the state restrictions as well, as far as the alcohol. August 19th, 2017, 12 noon to 7:00 PM. And...
Is that your motion?
No, it can't be, because the... Excuse me, but the applicant is this, remember? It's to be held at... You're reading it wrong.
I'll just put it...
No, okay. The applicant is Paul Rose.
No, both licenses have to go to Paul Rose.
Yeah, but it's the VFW.
I understand that, but he did not say...
If you say Paul Rose on behalf of the VFW, that's fine. That's what was understood.
Well, but it needs to be said.
Yeah, if you say it on his own.
It's the VFW, it's not Paul Rose.
It's not, it's Paul Rose on behalf of...
Say Paul Rose on behalf of us, we actually typed it in here that way. So in order for him to get them, let's just do it that way.
Yes, we have.
So moved.
Second.
We'll let Patrick second, that way it's consistent. When I try to instruct this, it's better. You're in line? Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Troppiano, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0 on that one.
Barnacle Bob's?
Which one? Are we doing Barnacle Bob's?
Barnacle Bob's.
I think he's operational now.
Yep.
He is.
You are?
He's actually here. Tim? Why not? You're next.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
I should say, bye. Thank you.
Okay, we have an application for a change of hours from you?
Yes, that is correct.
Just tell us while Allen's going through the paperwork here, if you could just tell us what you're looking for?
Of course. Good evening, madam chair, members of the board. Just, you know, Mr. Chair, I do apologize on my... Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Title Bob's?
Yeah, these used to look, come in and read in our nameplates, we don't have them tonight.
Yes, this is true.
You could've played me and gotten away with it.
I can put your name on your form if you like.
I could've left you anywhere else, but it's in here.
There you go.
Hey.
That's right.
You don't have to be that formal, just go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm here tonight looking for approval to tweak the hours lately at B.B.'s Bar and Grill at 2424 Cranberry Highway. Just generally speaking, it would be to increase the lunch hours from 12 noon to 11:00 AM, Monday through Sa... Monday through Saturday, and also every Wednesday night from 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. And we previously, the hours had included being open on Thanksgiving from 4:00 PM to closing, but we're looking to close all day on Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Thanksgiving and...
Is that what's reflected?
And Christmas.
Pardon me?
Says Thanksgiving and Christmas closed.
Yes, that is true, but Chris... That's correct. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve a change of hours for Barnacle Bob's Inc., D.B.A. Barnacle Bob's, and of B.B.'s, 2424 Cranberry Highway. Manager, Timothy Chabouin. The hours ought to be Sunday through Tuesday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Wednesday through Saturday, 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Thanksgiving and Christmas closed. New Year's Day, 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Correct? Second.
Okay, motion for change of hours by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Troppiano, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. You're all set. That'll be ready in the office for tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
You got a hearing, yeah?
Hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah. Okay, we have a hearing at 7:15, the transfer of an existing year-round retail packaged goods store, all alcoholic beverages licensed from Beniak Liquors Inc., D.B.A. Anchor Liquors, Jatendra Patel, manager, 2360 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Mass., to A.J. Food Corporation, D.B.A. Anchor Liquors, Ayushi Patel, manager, 2360 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Mass., under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the general laws. Motion open the hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion to open the hearing by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. Roll call, vote.
Troppiano, yes.
Whiteside, yes.
Allen, yes.
Allen, yes.
Scasiari, yes.
Okay, the hearing is now open.
Would you identify yourselves for the record and speak to us?
Good evening. My name is Attorney John Bragian. The office is with me is Ayushi Patel. She is the president of A.J. Food Corporation, and also the proposed manager of the Anchor Liquors group. Ayushi has formed A.J. Food Corporation with some other investors to buy Anchor Liquors from the... I think. Ayushi has good experience in the alcohol retail field. She is a manager at the Hookers Liquors brand, that's a place over there. She has just been appointed the board of directors of the Mass Association of Package Retail Stores. She is tip certified. And I'll let her answer any questions in her staff for her. Just what we're seeking today is a transfer of the license to A.J. Food Corp. Pledge of the license to Up and Trust Company to help with the financing and approval of Ayushi as the manager of the facility.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
State for the record that they lean against a liquor license for a bank is useless, is probably not. This is from a prior banker. You can say, you can, you can do it, but it doesn't...
I understand, but it doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't mean a thing.
Well...
No, it doesn't.
We have to...
Close hearing?
No, yeah, so you want to hear something?
Is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody opposed?
Who would close a public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion to close by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. Roll call, vote again.
Troppiano, yes.
Whiteside, yes.
Slaven, yes.
Allen, yes?
Scasiari, yes.
Okay, it's closed. Any deliberations, or are we just going to vote the sucker? Okay, move approval by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We'll sign it tonight, and paperwork will be available in the office tomorrow.
I need to read into the records also for the hours that they have listed.
Okay.
Is there any change in the hours, or is it the same management?
The hours are the same. Sure. Do you want me to read off to the big show? What's on here is what you have.
Sure.
Thank you. October to April, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. May through September, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Correct? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For choosing your business and wearing your...
Okay, how do we make out back there? We're good? Okay, well, thank you all for hanging in there while we took care of some routine business, so you can be TV stars. Why don't we move up right now and do the certificate of appreciation for the Gleason Family YMCA? And...
This is Whiteside's going to read that?
Yep, Selectman Whiteside's going to read it. Come on up. Debbie, come on. Yeah, Kevin, Chief Walsh would like to say a couple of words first. He was the senior official in the town directly managing the response to the events that day, and I know he'd like to say a few things.
Just without rehashing the whole incident, you know, on July 10th, we attested pretty well with the... An incident that was called in by an email, sent in by an email, that put the town in kind of a topsy-turvy moment. But we came together as law enforcement and people of the town and handled the situation, I think, pretty well. And everything ended safe, and the situation, like I said, was handled by a lot of people that cooperated. Wareham Police, with State Police, with EMS, Fire, Board of Health, anybody you can name came together, the school department, and everybody came together and handled the situation. When the decision came of where can we put all of these kids, or some of these kids, and what are we going to do, or where are we going to move them to? The decision was made to try the YMCA, the Gleason YMCA. That little decision, I think, turned out to be the major decision of the whole operation. We made that decision, but didn't expect, I certainly didn't expect the bonus plan that I, that we got with the decision. And while I, while I take accolades for the decision and everything else, and it really, the decision was made to what it became by the YMCA and Deb and her group. I actually didn't see what was happening at the YMCA until days later, when I saw a video of what happened. And when you see the buses roll in with the kids, it really, it could choke you up when you see them coming in and how they felt when they, when they arrived, and the parents when they saw their kids. And the volunteers that worked at the Gleason YMCA that day, and came in and took care of things, as if they had handled that type of situation every day, it was amazing to me when we saw her. So I can't thank them enough. I personally went down and talked to Deb the day after. It just, it was something. And I gotta say, I have a friend of mine that works in the school, and she was working that, that day, and with the kids and everything. And I said, "When did you feel safe? When did you feel completely safe?" And she said, "When we pulled into the YMCA is when we felt safe." Completely, that we were out of the, out of danger, and we saw people smiling and greeting us and taking care of us, and that's, that's when we all felt that we were in a safe, safe place. And I think that's the biggest compliment that the YMCA can get. But I just wanted to start it off by saying, give you my gratitude, and I speak on behalf of all the law enforcement and EMS and fire personnel, I'm sure, that were at the scene, that the YMCA stepped up in a fashion that is truly exemplary, and it's outstanding.
Thank you for your remarks. Selectman Whiteside, I think you have something to read there?
I do. The board is selectmen from Wareham, Massachusetts. The Gleason Family YMCA was opened in 2004 and named in honor of the Gleason family, generous supporters of the Wareham community for decades. The mission of the YMCA, an organization with more than 160 years of providing community-centered activities, is to promote healthy minds, bodies, and spirits through its local programs for members in all stages of life. On June 10th, 2017, the staff of the Gleason Family YMCA was called on to provide shelter and safety to Wareham Public School children and staff in response to a serious threat at our schools. With the help of YMCA staff, counselors in training, volunteers, members who were on site, first responders from Wareham, Rochester, and Plymouth County, the Wareham Board of Health, school personnel, Wareham Gaitman players, and many others, the Gleason facility worked quickly to repurpose different areas to prevent overcrowding and promote safety while maintaining order in a potentially chaotic atmosphere. With the support of Wareham Public Schools' summer program staff and St. Patrick's summer program, the Gleason facility organized lists of children, and the protocol for managing parent or guardian pickup of students was established. All was carried out with safety the primary consideration. YMCA Executive Director Debbie Frangelli published a letter in the local media thanking the Wareham community for its help in response to a frightening threat to the safety of our children. It is now time the community of Wareham gratefully thank the Gleason Family YMCA for its extraordinary efforts. Miss Frangelli quoted Mr. Rogers in her letter, thanking helpers. We also quote Mr. Rogers. "We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, 'It's not my child, it's not my community, it's not my world, it's not my problem.'" Then, there are those who see the need and respond, as our community did. It is with sincere gratitude that we, the Wareham Board of Selectmen, recognize the Gleason Family YMCA for its extraordinary efforts on behalf of the town of Wareham. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Peter W., Title Bob Chairman, Alan H. Slaven, Clerk, Patrick G. Troppiano, Judith Whiteside, and Anthony R. Scasiari.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to all.
I'm going to shoot him in the people.
Went so fast.
Yeah, I didn't think up against the wall.
You went from here to there.
I told you, call me in time.
That was going up. Go.
Okay, you know the grill?
Yeah.
Most important person in the middle.
My guy.
That's you.
My guy.
You, huh?
That's me.
Tall people in the back.
Tall people in the back. Okay, everybody who's on this side of me, scoot your belly that way. Everybody on this side, scoot your belly this way.
Okay, good. All right. Wow.
Can you guys turn the air away?
She does it every time.
Yeah. Awesome. Can I just say a few words, feel free to mind?
You may.
No, I really appreciate what Chief said about the YMCA. It wasn't just about us, it was about the group as a whole, and it really was an amazing day for us to experience. We, every single day at the Y, anything can happen. We are used to that, but to that level and to that volume, we certainly didn't expect what we saw. It was incredible to see the efforts by here, here members, volunteers, just walking by saying, "I want to help," and staying throughout the duration of that, that event, and really being an integral part of making that successful and safe for the evening for those kids, because they had no idea what was going on, and they wanted a bus check out to the Y soon. That was, if we could do the first day of school, if any other day, if they wanted to come back to the Y, so we're happy to be a part of this community and really happy to support everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All righty, pretty much cleared the room with that.
Wine some more, manager?
Yes, wines and more. Come on up.
Could you identify yourself with the record, please?
William Francis Rosini.
Thank you.
You have a request for change of manager?
Yep. Doesn't require hearing, so...
Like to tell us about yourself anyways? Hello? Why doesn't say hello and tell us who you are?
So I'm actually, I reside in Riverside, Allen, and I have been with the company for about eight years. I opened up the Mansfield location and managed that spot for about seven and a half years, and came down, was transferred to the Wareham location. So I bring to the, to the store about 27 years worth of retail management experience, so...
Any expected changes or anything with the operation?
Visually, yes. We're looking to redefine some areas of the store and display-wise, inventory selections, make it more open and friendly, and ramping up the staffing, aligning the staff, hiring some new individuals to take over certain departments, so a lot of good changes coming up, buddy.
Good, thank you.
How's your Beaujolais selection these days?
Pretty good. We have a great wine director down there that actually worked with me in Mansfield for about six years, so he's very, very knowledgeable. His name is Thomas Adams. You guys certainly come on in and take a visit, and take a look at the vast selection that we have available.
Good.
And at great prices.
There you go. Chamber of Commerce kind of moment, I like it.
Right, exactly.
I just have one question for you, and it really has nothing to do whether I would vote on this or not, but where do you display your Nips?
Behind the checkout. It's not accessible to anyone.
There's a lot.
Yeah, that, Nips, pints, half pints, all behind the checkout.
Why are they unofficial?
No.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, I've got all the paperwork here, everything's in place. I'll make a motion for change of management from the A.C.A.P.A., D.B.A. Weizenmore, 2424 Cranberry Highway. The change of manager is William F. Rosini.
Second, second.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Slaven, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. It's unanimous. This will be available in the office tomorrow for you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
And good luck.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Welcome. All right, we've really ping-ponged on this agenda. Let's, citizens' comments, I'll go to that. Anybody here to speak to the board tonight?
No, no citizens.
No?
I'd like to know that Jerry is okay. Please, somebody text us.
Yep.
Yep.
You want to do announcements?
Citizens' comments, well, thank you, Jesus, for that. Announcements? Yes, Selectman Troppiano, any announcements?
I have no announcements.
Selectman Whiteside?
Nothing to announce.
Yes, I met the mine at Forest Building, I think, did I already report on this two weeks ago?
Yep.
Yeah, remind me. It's too hot for me, I don't like it.
Okay, I've got a couple here, because I can't, I'm not familiar about the, you'll meet me at Tremont, thank you for that one. Okay, we just want to let you know that Coastal Sweep, which Wareham's been involved with over the last four or five years now, Coast Sweep basically goes out in different areas, cleans up beaches, et cetera, up and down the state of Massachusetts. We're going to be having the Coast Sweep. Little Harbor will be at September 16th, rain date, September 17th. Onset in Shell Point Beach will be September 23rd with a rain date of September 24th. Swiss, and Swiss Neck Beach will be September 30th with a rain date of 10/1. The state provides us with bags and gloves along with forms for recording. And I guess this is our third year with all the officials, hope to see everybody out there. Another announcement, we keep losing people, obviously, and we lost Rudy Santos. Also, Paul Cicatelli's son, who has a, had a difficulty, you know, life, different things, also passed away. I asked for a moment of silence for both. Rudy, in particular, did a lot for this community.
Rudy was a great guy. He was one of those people, you know, you could look at and you say, the soul of the town resides in that guy. He really gave a damn about a lot of different things, and was just a really, really great guy.
Rudy did a lot of good things for this town.
Yeah, I know, I know Paul is suffering too, and his wife as well, but I commend them for being forthright in publicly acknowledging the challenge their son faced and the challenge it ultimately took them. It takes a lot of guts to come out and say those things, and we're very appreciative of that.
It's a tough time, and it's a really tough time. Hopefully, people learn from it.
There's some good news, though. The feds have declared it as a national hazard. And that's a big deal, because that means it'll open up a lot of federal dollars that haven't been available, and they'll get some more beds and stuff like that. I was going to say this afterwards, but since we're in the middle of it...
Right.
Hopefully, they'll...
They'll get some beds and things, which we haven't been able to get. I mean, the state increases their beds by, you know, eight, and then they take away 10 because of the budget. Well, the federal dollars will help to increase those beds, and, you know, frankly, you know, it's not a very good success rate, but even if one is saved, or two, or 10, or whatever it is, it is what it is. You have to, you have to do it. You have to do it, and you have to do it best. And like I always tell everybody, get in the way of these people, because they are wanting help, they just don't know what to do.
Yeah. On August 26th, 5:30 to 8:30, out at the Tremont Nail Factory is the Meet Me at the Tremont event. Tickets are $35. Proceeds go to the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund, specifically for students from Wareham, who will be the beneficiaries. The tickets are available at the Chamber website, and they're also available at the Gallery Consignment Shop on Main Street across from the post office. I just want to say one thing about the Chamber. You know, several years ago, we had some interesting politics in our town regarding chambers of commerce. And we had one sort of spring up out of nowhere, and then after one election, it seemed to vanish. If nothing else, I think we should all know at this point that there is one true chamber that represents the town of Wareham, and that is the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to especially praise them for getting involved in events in our town. First, the Oyster Festival, where they were the primary sponsor, the applicant for the permit, and then getting involved in the Tremont Nail Factory. It's very helpful to our economic development, not just of, you know, Wareham Village or Tremont Nail Site, but the town in general, when your Chamber of Commerce becomes not only engaged with the businesses in town, but also the sponsor of events to highlight the town. And I wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged for that.
About the 17th, should we make a moving wall, maybe mention that tonight?
Yeah.
That's right.
That's coming up very fast. It's only three days away.
Opening ceremonies at 7:00 PM. I don't know the name of the retired general who was chief of staff.
Yeah.
It's going to be the opening ceremonies, and there'll be something every, I think there's three days at 7:00 o'clock, and two days at 12:00 and 4:00 o'clock.
Right, there's a soft opening on the 17th in the middle of the day. Traffic will be disrupted. There will be lights on the Anderson Track 24 hours a day. It is a solemn honoring of people who served in the Vietnam conflict, and we hope that the people who drive by with their music turned up to ear-splitting, whatever those words are, just turn it off.
Keep it down.
Yeah, keep, keep it down, and there should be...
Then you get passed.
Really, no, it's a, it's a place of, of honor. A lot of people have put an enormous amount of work into it, and yes, there will be traffic disruptions.
Just, just further in that regard, I did speak with Chief Walsh, and there will be detail officers out on Marion Road to assist with people turning in there, so that will help alleviate, hopefully, some of the traffic. Tie-ups anyway, but, you know, given the publicity with this, given the typical crowds that turn out, it's going to be a busy time. But don't let that dissuade you from going about your business, and certainly don't let that dissuade you from going to visit this while it's in town.
It's going to be open 24 hours a day. There'll be people there that you can go see. They will basically help you and assist you to find the exact spot where the person you're looking for is. I believe it's about 58,000 names on the thing, approximately. It's going to be interesting.
Yeah, I've been to the, the original, in DC, and it's, it's quite something. You know, from a distance, it looks like a rock. When you get up, you realize that what's on that rock is the sacrifice of almost 60,000 people on behalf of this country for an unpopular war, for which many of them received scorn and vitriol when they came home, when it was, if there was any fault to be had, it was the fault of their political masters and not the people who went to fight.
Wareham also has four names on that wall.
That's correct. And you will be able to find them, because there will be booklets with highlight, you know, people will help you find out.
There's six names.
No, four. Four.
Four.
Crowley, Rose...
What are my stories?
No, it's four.
Uh, let's see, let's see.
Do you have one day license for Buzzard Bay Playhouse?
Yeah.
About here?
What is it for?
August 19th. It's for a comedy show, I don't think there's an issue with that. I think this might be their last show.
Yeah, they had said that this might be the last show, because they simply can't afford the recommendations to improve the premises for public safety, so they're probably going to be looking for a new home somewhere.
I'll go ahead and read out the motion for this if you would. There's a motion for one day, Buzzard Bay Productions, 3065 Cranberry Highway, East
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Alright, that gets us through the licenses and permits, we've done everything right up until town business.
I am C. No, town business, I am C.
Yeah, liaison assignments.
Got my paper.
It doesn't really matter. That's a me thing, anyway. I get to be the dictator of the liaisons.
Well, you're just wooing.
It's kind of fun, I'm just informing. With regard to the Marine Resources Commission, I know Selectman Troppiano has been liaison, I've spoken with both him and Clerk Slavin about a reassignment. Clerk Slavin, and Selectman Troppiano's fine with that, and so is Clerk Slavin, and so it shall be.
I already knew.
Yep.
I already knew last week.
Yeah, you can talk to me on that afterwards. Continue discussion, read town meeting articles, and possible votes to place on warrant. We don't have anything before us, we don't have the town administrator here tonight.
I really think we should just...
Yeah, but I do want to talk about this going forward, because I am concerned that the 29th alone is not going to be enough time to go through all this. I don't want to do a rush job and then run the ship on the rocks at town meeting floor and discover that we've done that. The two possibilities are that we do meet on the Labor Day week somehow, I can phone in, Alan can run the meeting. The other possibility is to try to meet twice the week of the 29th and bang it all out then. I just want to hear you guys out and see what you think.
Just get it done.
That's preferable.
Patrick, are you okay with?
I will not be here on the 29th.
You won't be here on the 29th? Now, when is your vacation? Your vacation is next week, isn't it?
It got moved to the 27th.
So your vacation is the following week?
Yes.
So I should crank out an agenda for next week?
If that's okay with everybody, that would be better for me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Shouldn't it's...
Are we all available on Tuesday? Because, you know, when we're voting on these, I like to have five, anyway, I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, that would be better.
Yeah, let's do it Tuesday, and that way I can light the fire under people and get as much of that before us as we can. We will skip the week of the 27th, which would have been the 29th for the meeting. I'll get Janice to change the notice of meetings that we put up a month and a half ago. The media can relate that as well. And depending on what happens next week, we'll determine whether we need to meet the Labor Day week.
I will not.
You will not what?
Probably not gonna be here.
For which meeting?
The Labor Day.
The Labor Day.
Oh, I'm not either. But we have these things called phones, FaceTime, and all that good stuff, so...
I was gonna go away, I'll stay.
If you want to meet on, I mean, if we met on Tuesday, I'd have to notice something for you, it was, I can hardly call this an emergency. When are you departing?
Me?
There you go.
I'm not sure yet, but that's the problem.
Well, let's just do the 22nd, we'll worry about it next week. So, yeah. So that takes care of that. Does anybody have any?
Sunday. Let me know as soon as you're done, because I was thinking, Indiana, at that time, four or five days.
The Labor Day, or when?
Just before Labor Day.
Why don't you all, why don't you all email me with your particular vacation plans, and we'll go from there. That way I'll have it. I'm less likely to screw it up that way. I'm not saying I won't screw it up, it's less likely. Any 48-hour business, Selectman Troppiano?
No.
Selectman Whiteside? Clerk Slavin?
Yes, one quick thing. Rudy had asked me probably four or five times to, there's a tree that was planted by him over in Onset where he has bread and breakfast. He wanted to see if we could get a plaque, and maybe, I think he may be doing a bench, I just wanted everybody to know I'm gonna try and work on that. I did, promised him.
Absolutely, it's the least we could do. Thank you for that. Those requests typically go to municipal maintenance first, then we vote on them for the placement.
I know, just want everybody to head up.
Yep, no, that's, that's very good. Town administrator's report, he's not here, so that's...
We can call it.
Yeah, it's alright. Just coming back with his family, they're traveling, I don't think we're gonna have some... Liaison and initiative reports, Selectman Troppiano?
I'll say.
Selectman Whiteside?
I just did it.
I just did it.
Alright. Selectman Scasiotti, and you.
Okay, Cape Verde Cultural Council, there was a meeting I went to Friday before the actual festival. We had a nice event, Stevie Baptiste was voted a special award for service to the community. We've been working with them on the Oakdale School and stuff, about eventually getting that open to the Cape Verde Cultural Center. It's a work, it's a work in progress. Marine Resources, which I got assigned to, there was a meeting on oysters. Gary spoke about so upwellers, which is interesting, trying to get some help. We have an issue with the oysters that we're probably gonna need to have Gary come in, because I've been approached by several of the commercial oyster fishermen. If everybody remembers, it's probably before some of our times here. Back about, I think it was three years ago, Gary came in and wanted to do a moratorium for two or three years on...
He did?
He did, he did.
Yeah, we voted it.
But it's gone past now, and it's still there, and the commercial people are a little concerned that it's gone past what was agreed to. They disagree with some of the rhetoric that's out there. I don't know whether we have them come in and speak to us and how it's gonna work.
I think it's a good idea.
But I think it needs to come back, because we did agree with two to three years. We're now past that, and I think we owe them at least some discussion on that.
I think so.
So I'd like to get that scheduled and...
Try to work that next month.
Okay, now, I also went to a meeting of the state on dredging. It was in Plymouth, actually. It was an interesting meeting, Jay Ash was there from, he was the secretary for the area and stuff, and Mr. Ash talked about increasing the dredging funds by 400 percent. Well, that went from a whopping one million to four million. Anybody's dredging project in the state is usually $5 to $10 million minimum, so therefore, it's really not a money to do much of anything, but at least the state has recognized the issue that in New Bedford, in Fall River, in Boston, there are ships that cannot come up to the docks in those three areas, because there's not enough depth in water anymore. In Wareham, myself and two members from the MRC, and Gary were there, and we talked about the issues where we have a channel, in my opinion, discussion, whether the channel going out through the Louisiana, the Wareham River going out, and because the channels have silted in so much, as the water leaves, it's, it basically fans out, what I call an alluvial plain, and therefore, the stuff doesn't go out into Buzzard Bay like it should, and it just keeps building up this silt in there, and the both sides of the river going out. If you go where Peter and I live in Tempest, now, when you walk out off to Little Beach, what's left there, what you find is that it's muck, and the muck is probably about that thick when you step into it.
And they don't flush.
And they don't flush, because there's not enough flow. Not only that, is what's happening, people talk about global warming, and with global, and global warming, they're saying it's why the waters rise and go, et cetera. What's happening is, the water is spreading across, and it's washing away the beaches all through the Wareham River going out, because it's not flowing out the center where it should be. It's spreading out, and it's basically, if you go over to Pioneer, there's no beach there anymore. Swiss Beach is losing stuff. Where Peter and I live, it's virtually gone. And this is all due to, you know, not having a dredge, and not having the channels really working the way it's supposed to.
No, it also has to do with upriver dams, that that's how rivers get flushed, through water passage.
Yes, I understand, but the problem is, you've got a water pollution control facility, it's putting clean water out, but it's putting out so much volume in a concentrated area that's causing a problem, because before that, it worked okay.
No siltation, no question about it, you're absolutely 100% right, and you don't flush the rivers. When I was a kid, they used to do it all the time. It was standard procedure to dredge. The channel in my bay was dredged all the time. I lived on the beach for years, and it was dredged constantly.
I think the major dredge was in the 50s here, and there was another one in the 70s, but it wasn't a lot.
It was around 1970.
They used to do these little ones in between, they would do these little ones in between. What it does, it pulls the water back from the edges, you know? I mean, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, remember?
So it's a serious issue.
It is a serious issue, you're absolutely right.
Also, I believe Peter asked me to look into Mass DOT about, I guess it was a request to do some cleanup areas around the lighthouses.
Yeah.
Okay, I got ahold of Mass DOT, I forwarded to Derek the two forms. There's two ways we can do this. One, we have to take pictures before we do anything of the area, they want to have people that ask about being cleaned up or whatever. And we have two choices. One is what they call a temporary permit, which allows, you know, someone to go in and just temporarily do it. The other piece is for an organization to adopt the highway. I have the forms and all the paperwork for both. I've reached out to the garden club, my wife has probably killed me already on that one. Mary Drew Stuff, we will, we're looking to see if the garden club might consider doing this. It's a lot of work for them, especially if they adopt the highway program. So I gotta have pictures first, we have to show them what the pictures look like, and then the garden club will consider it. We should have an answer in 30 days on that one.
Good.
And I think, the other thing with Mass DOT is the, the information has come back on the amount of volume on Route 6 and Swiss Beach Road. The volume is sufficient enough to go on to the next step. I don't know whether or not this, I haven't seen the speed numbers or anything else, but they should be putting out a report in the next 30 days that goes to the state. We don't have much control over this, but at least the volume is enough to trigger the next step. So that's where I'm at.
And the speed will be enough to trigger the next one, too.
Maybe one day a light will just pop up.
I was hoping at least we're...
How we got the stop sign at the bottom of the hill there?
I'm hoping at least the control...
Till one day it showed up?
No crosswalk.
Do you know how long we've asked them?
I understand, but nobody's gonna have the paperwork.
Could you make a point of letting the Swiss Beach Improvement Association know where the status of that is now?
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they usually contact me, but why don't you?
Why don't you send out the...
You're the...
Send contact?
Yeah.
You better get, I don't think I, come direct email them. I'll send you the email.
I think I forwarded it to you a while ago, but I'll do it again.
Do it again, I'll take care of it.
This Whiteside is overheating.
That's enough for tonight for me.
Okay, consent agenda, let's see, we don't have any bills, we do have executive minutes.
Make a motion to accept the executive session of August 1st, 2017, and hold.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve and hold for August 1st, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Executive session for May 23rd, 2017. Again, to approve and hold.
Second.